I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could we please have a moment of silence? Thank you. Ms. Chafniski, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Corporah?
Here.
Mr. Giovanni?
Here.
Mr. Gofredo?
Here.
Mr. Heckman?
Here.
Ms. Keegan?
Here.
Mr. Kraft? Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Here.
Mr. Warren?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Can I please have a motion to approve the minutes of August 15, 2024?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. Next, we have courtesy of the floor. Five minutes maximum. Please check. I will give you a minute flag when you have one minute left. When you come to the podium, please state your name and city that you reside, and I will try my best to say the names that I see. But my eyes are bad, so I'm gonna say that. First, we have Steve Barron Jr., Stephen J. Barron Jr.
Good evening, members of council. I'll take two seconds. I just want to let you know this week, Blue Chip was in the room. You probably hear me a lot better now because above your head, there are four speakers. There was a lot of sound enhancements made to the room. We are also working out. The wiring was all done. We will be going to a Zoom rooms feature for your online meetings. We would encourage, we're going to be encouraging you not to watch YouTube and be on the phone, to actually enter the Zoom session. Members of council were working with Aileen to try to figure out what screen will be better. So you will literally be able to see your Zoom room up here or up here on one of those screens while everyone else sees what's going on. Your screens will be for presentations only, okay? And then Aileen came up with a wonderful idea today, and I think it's great about, like, if we need overflow instead of moving the room, having folks go across the hall to the training room and then have them be part of the Zoom room as well so they can see what's going on in real time and then come back over, especially since we do sometimes have space constraints in this room, and courtroom one is really just not acoustically great for broadcasting a meeting. So we've had a lot of good discussions. You will actually have a control panel in the room, so council members' microphones will be able to be unmuted by whoever is sitting back at that table. We are going to be getting rid of the phone because of the Zoom room feature, so you'll be able to see all of that. And the one thing, the other great thing is anything plugged in here on the podium will actually, remember when we would play videos or whatever, you couldn't hear it in the room. Now it will go out over the speakers. We won't have to put the microphone up to the computer. You'll be able to actually hear it over the broadcast. We are still going to be broadcasting to YouTube. It seems to be the best, most universal platform. But any other questions? They will be back in here next week. They're waiting for one big component yet to be able to split all the broadcast stuff up. You're still broadcasting over the own system. We have some new mics and speakers. Everything should be finished within the next two weeks.
May I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I know it's been a long time coming, and I bugged you, so I'll thank you. But the thing is, I just wondered. So in other words, just like with the Airport Authority and some of the others, it'll be Zoom. I visit, I remember with Zoom on my phone, so I'll be able to do that if I can't make?
Yeah, so you'll be able, so one of the things, we're gonna actually come up with county council. If you can't make a meeting, we're gonna give you a step-by-step directions. We're, we need to test out Zoom rooms right now because that's sort of the trend where everybody's going, even with the poly systems and stuff like that. So that's gonna be the newest way to do it, and we'll be able to actually have virtual access. So the speaker will be a part of the room along with the members of county council, and then we can add other components in. But one of the issues we are having is that when people are live on meetings, there's a delay through YouTube I can't correct because of the way it streams.
I agree.
So that's part of, I think, what is tripping up a lot of people. So we're gonna get them access right in, and that's pretty much it.
Thank you, Steve.
So then, if you, if we were home and had to watch it, will there be a Zoom room that shows what's happening up here?
Yep, you will actually, it's actually, it's, the way Zoom rooms works, it's actually a different app than what you're used to. It's an interactive meeting. You can choose to interact with it the way you want to. I would honestly suggest, though, that people leading the meeting, i.e. the president or whatever, you would have somebody live here in the room doing that, you know, you know, best in person. If we ever had to go back to COVID protocols, I would suggest thinking about people that address county council, i.e. having, you know, the executives' team all in one position, speaking as the county executive, having the council members as their each individuals, because we're still going to get feedback and have feedback loops if we're, you know, if you weren't in the room while still streaming the meeting. But yeah, that's the, that's the crux of it right now. We're gonna have step-by-step directions provided by IT on how to do everything, and we're still gonna be in the testing phases. Also, it will give you, for people who can't make it to the meeting, remember how we had the Human Service folks from Australia? It will give us the opportunity to allow them to be live with us, either through another link, a broadcast link, or through just the room capability in Zoom. So the person on Zoom, we are gonna pick one of the TVs. So one of these TVs is actually gonna be shut off from presentations. I'm not really sure which one would be the best, but you'll actually be able to see that person. I don't know that really the audience needs to be able to see that council member. They can see him back through the live meeting. But that way, it gives you the opportunity, the council person can actually see the dais through the two cameras that are gonna be here, plus the speaker, which will be the third, and then, and the two cameras will just broadcast one stream, so it's literally only two cameras. And then, microphones muted and unmuted. The person who's in charge of the room, specifically the person sitting back there, will be able to mute and unmute microphones, as they can hear or not hear in the, in the meeting. So.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you. Next, we have Brian Deo. Did I say that right?
Brian Deok.
Sorry.
It's okay. I am, I'm from Norristown, but I am, I am here on behalf of my members here. I am the staff representative for ASME District Council 88. I am the staff assigned to Local 2549, which is the Department of Corrections, which has a lot of these officers right back behind me. And for the last several years, the department has been experience of massive turnover rate and deteriorating working relationships with both the prison and county administration, which have led us to be here tonight. Several factors have contributed to the current situation, and I'm here to bring some of those matters to your attention as the member, as members of county council. The first topic I will bring up is the wage issue that continues. The body that I represent has sat by and watched as many other departments in this county have had representatives speak on their behalf to the state of their respective departments. The number one issue is consistently wages. Employees of Northampton County DOC, which is Department of Corrections, I'll use for short, are underpaid in comparison, comparison to most other counties of comparable size, both locally and across the state. Recently, several departments have come before council to voice their concerns, and several were eventually given some concessions. There were adjustments to pay scales, bonuses for hiring, and retention to name some, to name a few. These are a few things I mention because they are things we have asked for in many different ways, only to met with opposition. I'll start off. During the pandemic, the officers of the DOC continued to come to work when others got paid to stay home. Some departments needed the National Guard to come in and make up their workforce and keep things going. Bonuses were then paid to members of other departments just to come to work during the pandemic. We asked for similar concessions and were denied. We asked to work out some sort of bonus for retention to keep these types of employees, and were met with an emphatic no. We asked to make some significant changes to the pay scale to bring us to par with other comparable counties and attract quality job candidates and retain those that we had, and once again, were told no. One prime example of a current employee at the DOC with 13 years of employment with the county as a correction officer is that he is on step five of an 11-step pay scale. We will agree that in the last several years, the officers have received steps, but that still doesn't make up for the lack of movement in years prior. The union did a poll for their body, and 97% of the staff said they would stay at the DOC if constant pay increases were a reality, ala pay steps. For the last several years, they lost numerous workers to other jobs. They still begin losing officers that had five, 10, 15 years of experience. Dozens of them, and this administration didn't seem to think that was a problem. It seems as though they think you can just keep replacing people with new hires and everything will work out fine. I can tell you that losing an experienced officer like that in an environment like a jail is not easily replaceable and become a safety issue. As a former law enforcement officer myself, experience on the job is prevalent in training and knowledge of the job experience. Each year, the percentage of employees that keeps rising. As a possible solution to the staffing issues, the administration turned to attempt and alter our schedule. This was not something that we, as a body, asked for, but instead something adamantly pushed by the county in prison admin during the arbitration of the most recent contract. We were bounded by the arbitrator's decision to sit down and discuss the topic with our administration, which we have done. Our schedule is one major attraction for working at the DOC over the corrections and other facilities in the area. It is something we should use to our advantage in attracting new employees, not something we should get rid of. This fact was actually confirmed at a recent labor management meeting by a current captain during talks. We understand that the arbitrator's decision was to sit down on a scheduled discussion and not about wages. But in return for a schedule change, we did ask for a raise in wage increases to compensate for changing the lifestyle of our collective body. We also brought up retention bonuses again, and were met with a no. We also asked for answers in regards how the facility would run with the schedule change, questions that are not more reasonable for the body to understand before voting on a change to their current schedule, as they are ones that work the blocks and deal with the operation of the facility firsthand. Administration and HR can simply supply no answers to our questions, therefore asking us to blindly accept the change in our daily lives on no guidance on how it would actually work. This schedule talk has become a hot topic in the wake of increasing numbers of mandatory overtime. The body that I represent is tired, and they're worn down. People are being required to work mandatory overtime three or four days in a row. Some are mandated just about every day that they come to work. We are talking about 16-hour shifts with little sleep in between. This is unsafe for these officers while in the building and also while driving to and from work. The administration would like us to change our schedule because they claim it's the schedule itself that creates the problem of excessive mandatory overtime. This is simply not true. The schedule has some overtime built in, but over the years, we regularly have been employees, there have regularly been many employees who voluntary work overtime, which keeps mandatory overtime to a minimum when staffing levels are adequate.
Sir, you're almost out of time.
Okay.
So do you have much more, or, because if you have a long letter and you want us to have a copy?
Thirty seconds.
Go ahead. And then, but I just still want to say, you may give a copy of that letter to Ms. Negron, and she will make sure that we all get a copy of that.
That's fine. Many people need this overtime in limited amounts to counter their lower base pay and rapidly rising cost of living. The problem is that with the staffing levels we are at, the overtime is no longer a manageable amount. It has become excessive. I have been their staff long enough to have seen several fluctuations in staffing levels, and I can tell you with 100% certainty that we're even near full staffing, mandatory overtime is not an issue with the current schedule. As part of the aforementioned schedule talks, HR asked to have a town hall-style meeting with members of the body to discuss their ideas on the schedule change. They did this because they did not trust we were giving them accurate feedback from the body. We conducted a survey among the body and presented the findings to HR administration. We advised them that conducting the meetings, because they'd be dealing with people who are very, of not conducting the meetings, because they'd be met with people with a very upset, current situation. They were met with a, with not a pleasant reaction. As a result, all schedule-changing talks have stopped. In closing, the situation we are currently in as a result of the extremely low staffing level and inability to keep people from leaving the department, displeasure among employees isn't the only area where these issues leave a lasting effect. In the end, the Department of Corrections is here to provide a public service to those under its care and to their families. When staffing levels reach such a low level, the services provided cannot, cannot begin to be cut back. Visitation and programming for inmates can be greatly impacted. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next, I have Justin Edelman.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Justin Edelman. I'm Palmer Township resident. I'm also the current president of Local 2549, representing the officers here with me tonight. First, I have something that I'm gonna read that is a personal story from one of our body members, coworker and a very good friend of mine, and he asked me to read this here for him tonight. So these are his words. "My wife passed away on January 30, 2024, after a long battle with cancer and leukemia. Still trying to figure out life without her, still trying to get my mental health in a better place. Not an easy thing to do with all that is going on at NCP. I struggle to sleep at night. Life has gotten a lot more difficult, trying to balance everything out. Also, my daughter suffers from anxiety disorders and selective mutism, and with that, I'm limited to people who can help me take care of her. I have a very small support group, three or so people who are able to help me when they can. I can't burn them out and have them raise my child because I have to be at work. I am grateful for them taking what time away from their personal lives to help me right now, and I can't ask them to take much more. My child needs me more than ever, as well I need her. I am her father, and I will be the one to raise her, not my other family members. It's a shame when an employer who's unable to fulfill their responsibilities is now making an employee of almost 22 years choose between his family and his job. Does that not go to show how undervalued and unappreciated we are in the eyes of our employers? So now, not only do I have to worry about my child's health and care, I also have to worry about the roof over her head and the food on the table, and I'm not alone. No employer should expect employees to work the hours we are working, or maybe working in the future, and putting aside our personal lives, families, and health to fill the voids that they have created. It's crazy how we went from an open forum meeting where our opinions were wanted to where we are now. Vindictive retaliation, bullying, and trying to place fear into the employees to get what they want to fix their problems. Scare tactics that are as clear as day. I'm not alone in this. Every officer has their own story, and this was mine. We gave you our thoughts on how to fix the problem, but it fell on deaf ears. The issue is four M's: money, mandates, morale, and management. Zion Harstein, Badge 251." And also, another thing added to the presentation here tonight. I just wanted to be clear that the situation that we're in, the staff shortages that we have, Article I of our contract says that it is the employer's responsibility to hire, promote, transfer, assign, and retain employees, which we've been asking for in many different ways, and so far, it's not working out. And recently, there was an attempt by the county executive and our HR department to stop members of ASME Local 2549 from applying for and progressing through the process for internal job postings throughout the county. This was done behind the scenes. We have emails and communications from HR to show that this happened, and it's the union stance. It's a clear violation of the Home Rule Charter, Article 8, Sections 806, 807, Article 13, Section 1307. And overall, our HR department seems to no longer be a place for the employee to go for help. It has become an enforcement agency for the bullying campaign of our executive. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, I have Sean Babjak. Okay, thank you. Here, let me do that. John Croce? Yeah, he should have told me that when Brian was up here, but thank you, because he could have talked longer. Ross Lang? Alan Pinkowski. So does anybody want to talk? All right, is there anybody who, huh? Well, I understand. Is there anybody who did not sign up this evening for courtesy of the floor that wishes to speak to courtesy of the floor at this time? Okay, that's it then. Thank you. Is that right that I just? All right. Mr. McClure, do you have a report?
Earlier tonight, Ms. Smith at the EDC meeting indicated that we would need two representatives from the county to the Northampton County Industrial Development Authority to liaise over the Northampton County Industrial Development Authority's issuance, if there is one, of TIF bonds relative to the Dixie Project. So what we would need from council is a motion appointing two people, and I would suggest Tina Smith and her deputy Mark Tominek, but it doesn't have to be them, to make, counsel to make a motion tonight to refer two people to the IDA to liaise regarding the TIF bonds. This is a requirement in the statute. It's a, it's a box that needs to be checked, and I think it's sufficiently emergent that it can be handled with a motion, doesn't need to be a resolution, probably does not run afoul of, in my view, sunshine and advertising because of the timeline with respect to the bond.
Could you articulate that timeline? It can't be handled on the 19?
No, it's, it'll put, it'll put the whole timeframe off.
So what is, so tell me what it's for again?
So the, the statute, we originally envisioned, and I think you're aware of this, we originally envisioned having the general purpose authority be the TIF board, but the statutory interpretation by the attorneys from the developer suggests that the IDA, if you have one, has to be the issuing authority and the TIF board. And as a corollary to that, the taxing bodies must appoint two members to liaise with the IDA as the IDA is doing its thing. So Wilson Borough has done that. Wilson Area School District has done that, and Northampton County needs to do that as well. And Mark Tominek, her deputy. Uh, no, the, I think the IDA meets in late afternoon, 4 o'clock, something like that.
Is there anything else in your report? He's looking things up. So is there anything else?
So yes, I know council likes to have updates with respect to mail and ballot applications. As of this morning, we had 35,500 mail-in ballot applications received in the elections division. And that's all I have?
Thank you. Are there?
Does anybody have any questions for me?
Question from Mr. McClure.
Sure, go ahead.
Without violating anything?
Sure.
Can you speak to what we heard tonight?
Well, do you have a specific question? I mean, there's a lot to unpack there.
Do you take, so you take issue with some of the statements made tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Are we currently in a negotiation?
No, we're, we're at a contract. We're in the middle of a contract. We're in the middle of a contract.
Okay. All right. I was just taken by surprise.
Yeah, we're in the middle of a contract.
Okay. I just wanted to know.
Which we're honoring.
Okay. It was negotiated by?
Oh, yes, yes. So there were, there were negotiations at the table, and then at some point, stalemate was reached and bargaining unit requested binding arbitration, which is mandatory, because they're not permitted under the law to strike, so they get mandatory arbitration, and a neutral arbitrator settled the contract.
Oh, okay. So this was through the arbitrator?
Yeah. So it was a 5% in the first year, and then a step in the second year, and a step in the third year.
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
Having that we have no business in the contract negotiations, my main concern was the notion that employees in the prison seeking other employment in the county were basically getting found out through HR and basically getting, can you, can you comment to that?
So that's, several grievances have been filed with respect to those issues, which makes them a personnel issue, and if you'd like me to speak further to that, which I would be happy to do, we'd need to have an executive session.
Understood. So is it being investigated? It's being investigated, and that's something that?
Well, it's being grieved. So the actions are being grieved, and if you want to talk further about it, it's a personnel matter, and we'd need to have an executive session.
Ms. McClure, along that line, any employee, I think, according to the Home Rule Charter, that's been employed for six months in the position they're in, in the county, has a right to bid on any other, assuming they're qualified, position within the county that becomes open. Is that correct?
So that's not my understanding. Your work conditions, if you're in an organized unit, are determined by the four corners of your contract. And you're not necessarily entitled to the mechanisms of the career service.
Okay, but the contract would not prevent someone from leaving that?
So.
To pursue other work.
So grievances have been filed, Mr. Brown, and if you'd like to discuss that?
No, I'm asking for the, I'm asking for the policy, not for a determination of it. I'm asking for policy.
I told you what my understanding is, that the four corners of the collective bargaining agreement determine what your rights are.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
My only question is, why am I making a motion to appoint somebody to a board when we haven't even heard an approval of a TIF at this time?
So it wouldn't be for the approval of the TIF. The Northampton County Industrial Development Authority needs representatives of the taxing body to be present and potentially answer questions about what the, what the particular taxing body is thinking about the Industrial Development Authority issuing bonds at all.
All right, now I understand.
So it's, it's, it's really an administrative regime, if you will.
Is it safe to say that there's no responsibilities until the TIF becomes enacted?
Right. And it doesn't, so, so appointing anybody to liaise with the IDA about this doesn't signal any, doesn't signal any decision that council's gonna make.
There's no meetings before anything is decided here at council, right? There's nobody going there to answer questions about the TIF to the general public before the council makes a decision on the position of the TIF, correct?
And I don't, I'm not sure I'm following your question. Because the answer, if I understand your question, the answer is no, because they're already talking about it. The IDA is already talking about it. The developer has presented to them.
You don't need any representatives from this body or from your body, from your, from your administration yet, until the TIF is decided upon?
I think the solicitor for the IDA believes they need the representatives from each of the taxing bodies before they make their decision.
Yeah. So that, I guess that's kind of the question, that if you don't know for sure, we should probably know because I'm sure.
No, I do know for sure. That's, the solicitor believes that each of the taxing bodies needs to have representatives there before they reach their decision.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else?
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
Under old business, we have a public hearing of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the Northampton County to address public health in Northampton County restrooms. Ms. Keegan and myself introduced this ordinance at the August 15 meeting. Are there any questions or comments from the public at this time? Hearing ends, seeing none. Are there any discussion from council members regarding this ordinance? Mr. Heckman?
I'm supportive of the ordinance. I just have a couple of questions of process. This happens when we initiate something, and, you know, with the administration. Is there, has there been a, a cost determinant on what this would cost? Okay.
Yes, so we would be looking at approximately?
Yes, so we would be looking at approximately 69 restrooms. There are 35 women's restrooms and 34 gender-neutral restrooms that would be outfitted with dispensers. The cost, the one-time cost for dispensers would be $28,415, roughly, $30,000.
Okay.
And then products, about $16,000 annually is our best estimate. When you buy in bulk, the, the price comes down. But that number could be, could be lower. That's a higher estimate.
Thank you. And the second question that would be, is there going to be a nominal charge, or is this going to be free? Somebody could just walk in and take?
Our understanding of the ordinance is that they would be free, and this cost is based on free products.
Okay, well, I, I just have to ask, because numerous studies over the years, as well as putting out a bucket of candy for kids on Halloween, most of the time, they just take one or two, but you can have that situation where the bowl is emptied. Now, I agree, I'm for the intent behind this, but without a nominal charge, I'm concerned that someone could come in, we have a lot of different people come through the government center, all kinds of people, that someone could empty the machine for whatever reason. So is there a way we're going to be able to monitor that?
I mean, we will be able to know if the machine is empty and if we're refilling some more than others, but we wouldn't be able to know if someone went in and emptied a.
I, I mean, from my perspective, I would wish there would be some kind of nominal charge. One old study that's often cited is the free cokes and the cokes you had to pay a nickel for. That was many years ago. And the free cokes, there were found half-empty cokes here, there, and everywhere. When you had to pay a nominal fee, you didn't see that many half-empty cokes or warm cokes laying around. People are, they, they sort of take a little bit more hesitancy to just grab whatever they could grab. That was my, that's a concern. It's not going to necessarily stop me from supporting this.
I know that there have been studies since there have been a lot of movements towards providing free menstrual products in public restrooms, where they have looked at it and seen that in the first few months, there tends to be a higher utilization rate, where you're using more product in the first couple of months, and then that number seems to kind of come down and normalize. Those studies, I haven't seen reports of rampant theft or misuse.
All right, well, I mean, and I hate to, I know I'm, I'm not, well, I'm not bursting the bubble, but people are people. I, I mean, I've lived a long time, and, and if people, you know, I'd love to live in a world where that would never happen, but I've never lived in that world. So I, I have to, as a custodian of the people's budget, feel obligated to ask some of these questions. Now, the, the restrooms, does that include parks?
Yes.
Does that include parks? Okay. Will, we got a report or an audit in, I don't care, six, whatever the wish of council, six months or a year, to get a sense of where we're at with this program?
Sure.
I mean, I, it, it's a great idea, and I applaud Ms. Keegan's, and I know she's very passionate about this, and I understand that. But, you know, I mean, I, I'm just, I just looking at the dollars and cents, because that's what taxpayers pay me to do as well. And the other thing would be, let me see, excuse me, I'm sorry. I think you answered basically the questions I was going to ask. Is this in the bu, this isn't in the budget, so you'd have to appropriate new monies?
Yes.
Okay, well, in the past, that's been a, a rub, when council proposed something, and we were told, it's not in the budget, it's not in the budget. So, so you found the money for this already?
We planned a budget for it for next year, but it hasn't.
But what about this year yet?
We'll get a budget for next year and start to roll out.
Okay, so you're going to put it in the budget for next year? All right. Okay, now I understand that better. All right, thank you. That's all my questions. If anybody else has anything?
Does anyone else, oh, sorry. Does anyone else have any other questions or discussion?
Okay, go ahead.
No, you go, go ahead.
I just want to say that this is about three issues for me. The first issue is hygiene. This is about basic hygiene and cleanliness. Just like toilet paper is provided in all public bathrooms for urination and defecation, period products should be provided for all people who menstruate. According to hashtag Free the Tampons, 86% of U.S. women ages 18 to 54 reported that they have started their period unexpectedly in public without the supplies they needed and had to improvise by making a tampon or pad out of toilet paper or something else. Not only is this practice inhumane, but it's also unsanitary, and it could lead to infections and toxic shock syndrome. The second issue is dignity. Menstruation is not a matter of choice for women, but rather a natural responsibility that women are expected to handle independently. Having access to menstrual care products in public restrooms makes that a positive facility experience. No one wants to be caught off guard outside their home without access to sanitary products. All public bathrooms should provide for all bodily functions, not just the two that women have in common with men. A lack of available products creates a feeling of shame and embarrassment, which is unnecessary if we provide what is needed. And despite what some people say, those are not luxury items. Menstrators should feel that their needs and well-being are considered. And lastly, equity. A monthly period is a normal bodily function for people who menstruate, just as urination and defecation is for men. Urination, defecation, and menstruation are all biological functions and should be treated equally. No one is expected to bring their own toilet paper to a public bathroom. Toilet paper is a fundamental right, and so should menstruating products. Yet there is a nearly ubiquitous expectation for menstruating people to supply their own tampons and pads. This discrepancy highlights a clear gender inequity. Periods are a normal bodily function, and the fact that women's restrooms are not equipped with the items we need to tend to our normal bodily function is equal, is an equality issue. Men's restrooms have everything men need. Women's restrooms do not. Tampons and pads should be treated like toilet paper. It's the same thing. This is not a privilege, it is a matter of fundamental rights. I'm proud to sponsor this ordinance, and I hope my colleagues on this council support the appropriate hygiene and dignity that menstruating people deserve and equality for all the appropriate public bathrooms in North Hampton County. My only regret is that North Hampton County is not the first county to pass this ordinance in the state. Montgomery County is the only other county that provides menstruating products that I know of.
Thank you. Jeff, did you want to go? I'm sorry, Mr. Warren.
Yes, yes. Thank you, Madam President. I began looking into this issue, frankly, back in 2019, and before I was even elected to the Hanover Township Board of Supervisors. I won that race. 2020 came around, COVID hit, and unfortunately, it, it got put on the back burner. But I was grateful to have a conversation with Commissioner Keegan earlier this spring. We talked about this. Both her and I had done extensive research over the years on this matter, and we came together. We wrote an op-ed that appeared in some of our local media outlets to raise awareness of this, in the hope that we would be able to do this here in North Hampton County. And the one thing I want to first talk about really quick is what this is not. This is not a government handout. This is not welfare. This is not about, quote, "personal responsibility." What this is first and foremost is a humans and equal rights issue. And why shouldn't menstrual products be available to women if toilet paper is available to men? And I go back 34 years, folks. 34 years ago, 1990, there was this pesky little initiative down in the federal government called the Americans with Disabilities Act. And at the end of the day, I think we all know what that act did. It protected people with disabilities from discrimination in everyday activities. And there were actually folks back then that said, no, we can't do this. Can't do it. It's going to hurt local governments, state governments, the federal government, in terms of a mandate like this. But at the end of the day, it was the right thing to do. It was the morally right thing to do. That's why I'm supporting this. That's why I believe this initiative is for the best of our county residents, those who come into our county facilities. And why was the ADA eventually passed? Again, because it was the morally right thing to do for the society that we were living in in that time. And talking about this here in 2024, it seems to me amazing that we would take a look 13, or 34 years ago and say, wow, people were questioning that. What we are initiating today, and hopefully initiating today, it should have been done decades ago. Should have been done decades ago, but now is the right time to right this inequity. So thank you, Madam President.
Does anyone else have a, yes, Mr. Gafredo?
Considering this is an ordinance, and it will be law, there's nothing in here differentiating the fact that this doesn't have to go in every restroom with running water. So by law, if this gets passed, it would have to probably go in men's restrooms too, if somebody wanted to hold it up by the way it's written. So I make an amendment to add women's and gender-neutral pretexting everywhere where it says county restrooms in between county and restrooms.
Can I ask why the amendment?
Yeah, tell us.
What? I think I just explained that, because it doesn't differentiate anywhere else in the ordinance. Specifically says this ordinance shall not apply to any North Hampton County restroom which does not maintain running water, and should not apply to any porta-potty units, which are, oh, I'm sorry, this one. North Hampton County shall provide sanitation products at no cost to users, blah, blah, blah. Sanitation products required by this ordinance shall be placed within North Hampton County restrooms and shall be openly accessible to all users of county restrooms. So the administration just came up and said women's and gender-neutral, which makes sense to me. It just doesn't say anything in this ordinance about it. So I'd like to make an amendment to say women's and gender-neutral in between county restrooms.
I guess before, you need a second, but I'd like to make a comment before you do. I signed on to support this because I absolutely 100% agree with the menstruation being a sanitation issue, absolutely. But the other reason that I signed on to this is because I believe all people have a right to access to products in whatever bathroom. Now, that doesn't mean men need tampons, per se, but I believe that sanitary products should be also available in men's rooms. On the day that I was installed, my father had an accident. He was 90 years old. He had an ostomy bag and two nephrostomy tubes. There are a lot of people walking around of all ages that have those problems. There are children that have ostomy bags because of Crohn's disease. I believe all of those things need to be available in all bathrooms. There need to be soap. There needs to be paper, potentially pads or wipes or something, because, thank God, C. Baron was there that day, because I couldn't get in the men's room to help him, because it was filled with, with guys, and I couldn't go in to help him. But we stopped at a restroom, and there was nothing. And so, like you said, everyone deserves dignity. And as we age, problems, medication, there's, there's issues with all ages and stages of people. So I can understand that you don't necessarily want tampons in a men's room, but if there needs to be certain kinds of wipes, or pads, or other kinds of things that help people of a certain age that you're not at yet, sir, and I hope you never need to be.
But that's not what we're talking on this ordinance.
Well, it, it is, and it's not, because it, the ordinance says sanitation products.
What if we need diapers? Do we put those in bathrooms for babies?
Well, ma.
Or older people?
That's not what we're talking about right now.
Well, that's what my point is. We're talking about tampon dispensers, and I think it seems pretty ridiculous to put tampon dispensers in men's rooms. That's the only point I'm making.
I understand.
I would like to vote on that amendment, or if I can get a second to it.
Well, you need a second. So I just wanted to make the point that I think there's, that there needs to be other things too. Because if the cost at this point of initiation is only $46,000, what's a few more pads or different kinds of products?
I'll second his motion.
Thank you. Any discussion on the amendment?
I really don't understand why this would be an issue if there were to be a, a plastic cylinder with cotton in it within a men's room. I honestly do not see what the issue would be at all. I don't know how a cotton, or a, a plastic cylinder with cotton would somehow hurt our county, our county residents in any way, shape, or form. So I will not be supporting this amendment.
Any other discussion?
Call for the vote?
And the votes are.
Wait, on, call for the vote on the amendment, yes.
The vote, the vote is on the motion to amend to say women and gender-neutral bathrooms. Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Giovanni?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
No.
Mr. Warren?
No.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Corporah?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
No.
Ms. Keegan?
No.
Mr. Kraft? Motion fails by a vote of four to five.
Any other discussion on the ordinance as it exists? Mr. Heckman and then Mr. Brown?
You, I, I know it says sanitation products, but they're very specific in their discussions. And you mentioned a few things. I mean, should that, if you want that in, shouldn't it be written in?
I don't want to dilute Ms. Keegan's intent with this, but, so I'll defer to her, because I think that it's essential that we highlight the menstruation stuff. But I think if there's other products that need to be placed in men's rooms just for sanitary purposes, that's up to you if you wanted to add that. It's, it's, to me, really, it's under the whereas as definition, so legally, I don't know, is that an issue? Yeah, I'm asking you.
Sanitation products are described in this draft, in this proposal, and it says the following. Soap, toilet paper, menstrual pads, and tampons. Thank you.
I don't know what else I would need. I mean, because pads are, I'm a female, so pads are pads to me, no matter what we're using it for. I don't know what men use, but, you know, I think some men use other products, so.
Well, there, there are men that are incontinent, and the pads look just like feminine hygiene project, products. I mean, it absorbs liquid, so, you know what I mean?
Should, should I just, menstrual and incontinence pads? Would that be sufficient? And just add the word incontinence? Do I need to do this?
No, I, I don't.
Pads are pads. All right, I'm done. My intent is clear. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Brown?
I understand the intent of what you're doing, or what this ordinance is intended to do. The objection I have is that it's being done by ordinance, and I would like to understand, was, has there been a conversation with the administration just asking that this be done as part of the normal course? I mean, we're, we're codifying something. We're using this body to pass a law. I understand the intent of why it's being done and don't necessarily disagree with the intent, but it just seems like the vehicle is way over the top for what you're, what, what is being asked for. So, you know, I'd like to ask the administration, has there been a conversation outside of this ordinance to put these products in place within the county?
Yes.
And you're, the reason it says an ordinance, you require an ordinance in order to be able to do this, or you just object to, or does the administration find objection to what's being presented?
When first approached by Commissioners Keegan and Warren several months ago, I said that if council's view through a resolution was to do this, we would do it. I didn't require an ordinance.
An ordinance, right. Okay, but thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Comment. And that, that's, that's the objection I have. You're, you're, we're passing a law, and it's, I just think it could have been done and achieved in a lot simpler way.
Well, Mr. Brown?
Wait, be recognized. You're recognized.
I'm recognized, thank you. I think we're spending money. In order to spend any kind of money, we're affecting the budget, we have to do it via an ordinance, a resolution or a motion to spend money. And this is clearly spending, what are we at, 60,000? And this is clearly spending, what are we at, sixty thousand dollars? So we are spending money and need an ordinance or a resolution to do that. So I think she's using the right vehicle to pass this. I mean, the administration could have done it on their own. They're going to come here for a budget amendment to put these products into the bathrooms. Same thing.
I think she could have done it either way, but.
Right.
The only thing I would say is that in practice, when we've done a resolution and asked for things, it hasn't always happened. So I don't mind that she skipped right to an ordinance to make sure that there's cost involved. Unfortunately, that's been our experience. Any other comments? Call for the vote.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
No.
Mr. Gafredo?
No.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Mr. Corporah?
No.
Passes by a vote of five to four.
Thank you. Next, we have. Any other old business? Sorry, do we have any other old business to bring up? Hearing seeing none, we have the consideration of local share funds on behalf of Habitat for Humanity of the Lehigh Valley Resolution. Mr. Gafredo, will you introduce?
Whereas Northampton County Council does hereby support request for both Monroe County Local Share Account Grant and Northampton and Lehigh Counties Local Share Account Grant in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars from the Commonwealth Financing Authority on behalf of Habitat for Humanity of the Lehigh Valley for the acquisition of additional acreage in order to build twenty-five to fifty affordable homes for low to moderate income households in Forks Township, Easton, PA. And whereas Northampton County Department of Community and Economic Development has prepared all the documentation necessary to submit the request for this funding. Now therefore be it resolved, the Council of Northampton County does hereby designate the county executive to execute all documents and agreements between the County of Northampton and the Commonwealth Financing Authority to facilitate and assist in obtaining the requested grant.
Mr. Gafredo, introduce discussion on the matter. Call for the vote.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Corporah?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of nine to zero.
Next, we have consideration of approval of Northampton County Historical and Genealogical Society funding. Mr. Gafredo, would you introduce?
Now therefore be it resolved by the County Council of Northampton, the requested one hundred thousand dollars to support the nation's two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary is approved by Northampton County Council, and such funds are to be paid by the Northampton Historical and Genealogical Society. Number two, the D C E D Community Planning Fund shall be utilized to fund this grant. Number three, officials of the County of Northampton are authorized to execute the grant agreement with the Northampton County Historical and Genealogical Society, not to exceed one hundred dollars.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the matter?
Yeah.
Yes.
I've been trying to follow this when I was absent, but on, on the phone. So we have the Genealogical Society, which I understand here, and we have the Northampton County Two-Fifty, and that's a separate entity. And then is the state doing something?
The state is not involved in this. The state is the larger group that's sponsoring America Two-Fifty.
But we're not giving them any money.
No, this is directly for local Northampton County events, and the team is in the back, or at least they see three.
Okay, well, then I have an amendment I'd like to, to make, if I may. On number one, it reads, the requested one hundred thousand dollars to support the nation's two-fiftieth anniversary is approved by Northampton County Council, and such funds are be paid directly, I'd like to add directly, to the Northampton County Geological Historical Society. So I'm adding the word directly right after paid.
Okay.
I want to be sure the check is cut to the, their name goes directly to them.
I don't see Megan having an opposition to that by her response.
No, well, I, my phone was buzzing and, I mean, I, I said, now I, I understand now that everybody parsed out their, their turf, what's going on, but just to be clear, I wanted to.
I'll second your motion, Mr. Heckman.
Thank you, sir.
Is that the only, the only one word?
That's it.
Okay. Any other comments on the amendment, questions? Call for the vote on the amendment.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Corporah?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Are there any further discussions on the, on the resolution? As amended, let's call for the vote.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Corporah?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Passes by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have the consideration of acceptance of Greysdale Daycare donations resolution. Mr. Brown, will you introduce?
Whereas pursuant to Home Rule Charter, Section Two-O-Two, County Council shall have, among others, the following powers, to accept on behalf of the county any gifts of real property and to provide for the acceptance by any agency on behalf of the county of other gifts. And whereas the Department of Human Services has requested to be allowed to accept donations of gently-used toys and furniture for the Greysdale Daycare on a continuing basis. Now therefore be it resolved by the Northampton County Council that it does hereby direct the Department of Human Services to accept donations for the Greysdale Daycare on a continuing basis.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this matter? Call for the vote, please.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Corporah?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Doubt by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have consideration of C cap Annual Voting Member Procedure Resolution. Ms. Keegan, would you introduce the resolution?
Yes. So whereas the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania C cap Bylaws, Article Two, Section One-B states that in a homeroom, Home Rule Charter County with an Executive Council Plan provides that annually, no more than five members from any county shall have the right to vote. The five members having the right to vote shall be annually designated by the members of the County Council, and such designation shall be transmitted to the association C cap seven days before each annual conference. And whereas on July twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four, the Northampton County Council received communication from C cap that it had been mistaken in its process of requesting the list of voting members and that such list of members should have originated from County Council. And whereas members of County Council are desirous of ensuring the process in the future is in compliance with C cap bylaws when more than five Northampton County representatives are attending the C cap annual conference and seek the ability to vote. Now therefore be it resolved that the Northampton County Council shall have twenty-twenty-five forward conduct, a majority rule system whereby if more than five county representatives seek a vote at the C cap annual, such votes will be, take place in the weeks preceding the conference.
Thank you. Is there any discussion regarding this matter?
I have a discussion.
Wait, Mr. Gafredo.
Can somebody who's been to C cap, because I've not been there, explain to me what this is changing from how we've done in the past and that we've been complying with the rules as they're known? Or do we not know? I, I'm just looking for a little bit of backstory here that I'm missing in this resolution.
I, I can address it. This year, more members attended than ever before. In the past, my understanding was that the county executive had been picking. I learned this year that the council was supposed to be the people that pick. And again, I don't know if that's a bylaws.
You say pick, you mean pick the people that go?
Select who gets the votes because there's nine of us and there's only five votes at this time for this county. So, and I, again, in the past, and maybe in Ken's time, it was different, but we haven't always even had five people go. So there's five votes, you could vote by Zoom, but this time we had more than five. And so I believe in the future, rather than avoid this problem, we should vote as a majority, like council should vote for who goes. My, I have some concerns, but I think that answers your question.
It does.
I have some concerns with how it's written, but go ahead, Ken.
Well, my only concern is I believe that the county executive should be an automatic vote, and we should pick the other four. I mean, the county executive is elected at large to represent the county. We're a home rule charter. We're part-time, he's full-time. You know, it's, I think, Lehigh County's executive argued that at C C A P that the county executive should have a vote. And I don't know why that's omitted from here. I understand we pick, because in the past, the county executive picked the voting people that were going to the, to the C cap. That's who they got the list from, the county executive. They changed it in their bylaws somewhere, but I believe it should still be the county executive, whoever that may be, should be an automatic vote for the county he represents.
But isn't this the County Commissioners Association?
It's C C A P, but County Commissioners are basically three-member bodies.
Right.
And they have, they're all full-time. We're a home rule charter. We're an anomaly in the state. I guess there's what, three or four of us now?
Five, I think.
Five now? I mean, it's an experiment.
Seven.
And seven now? But anyway, I, I believe the executive should be an automatic vote and that four of us should also vote. I don't see any harm in that. I mean, Lehigh County's executive asked for it, and I believe in other executive because it's, you know, who the, the people vote to represent full-time for the county. Other C C A P, we're, we're, we're an anomaly. Everybody else is a full-time member. They go there every day like Lamont does. That's a full-time job for them.
Mr. Heckman?
He go every day?
He goes to work every day.
I don't think Lamont was going to go every day, based on my conversations with him in the past. But anyway, I'm going to take, I don't disagree with your, your intent. I, I'm going to take a couple of points here of issue, and I saw this come through. First of all, we have to remember, C cap has a right to set whatever rules they want for C cap. They have no right to tell us what to do or not to do as an independent governmental entity. They can say you can only have X amount of people. They, they can't, they cannot recommend who you do or do, but they have no real say. We say that. Now, as far as who picks, because I thought this could be a bit contentious, and it has come up at times in the past. If you look at Section Two-O-One under Article Two, the County Council Title and Status, the County Council shall be the governing body of the county, which shall exercise the legislative power of the county, including the power to make laws and to exercise any residual powers of county and any powers conferred on a county or county official by the law of Pennsylvania, subject to the provisions of the charter. Now, the charter, as far as I could see through no place, said that the executive, county executive had a right to do any of this, that any residual powers, and I've talked to a few county executives, and this is where sometimes I think county councils, legislative bodies sort of falls backwards on itself. We hold residual powers. To me, picking some representatives for C cap would be a residual power. That's not defined or clarified anywhere in the Home Rule Charter or the Administrative Code, other than Section Two-O-One, where all residual powers reside with the County Council, so that there is that commissioner aspect. Now, we don't, the powers he has are clear, like when we had the union. He negotiates. We can't get involved in that. Some have wanted to, and I wouldn't, that's not what we do. But this is something that's removed from all of that. So now I, I, I let other people say what they want to say. Do I have a problem with saying, and she's right, there was a time when maybe two people would go. You, you'd have to fish to find people to go. So the thing is, I think that if council would deem at any given, any meeting to say, let's ask the executive if he wants to go or not, I don't have a problem with that. I do have a problem with establishing a policy that says the county executive automatically has the ability to do that because that's conferring of something to, on the county executive that is really in the purview of the County Council. And I have always had to push hard on County Council's authority.
And I agree with your assessment, but being a home rule charter, he is basically the commissioner that oversees everything every day.
He's not a commissioner.
We are the commissioners. I know he's called the executive, but I mean, the way we, we enacted this whole body.
That's how the charter is, I'm reading the charter.
We can still nominate whoever the executive is to go if it's something pressing for all counties. That's fine with me. I'm just saying.
I'm not saying I, I don't want him to go. I, I think in the past, he didn't want to go. But if he wants to go, that's his, that's his prerogative. Well, I mean, no, now you have a great interest. I mean, I've gone, and, and, I mean, there's a lot to learn. I think if you go there, if you're going to vote, it, it's good to have gone a few times, gone to some of the workshops. There's really a lot to pick up there.
Right.
And of course, there's going to be certain slants on things. You just look at the membership. But it's, it's a very educational process. And this isn't something about, I want to do something with this specific executive. I'm just speaking in general. For now, I think it should be County Council decides, and how they decide is up to County Council. But I'm not, I'm not objecting to a County Council person saying at some point, well, we're going to have to decide, let's give one to the executive if he wants to go. I mean, it's a home rule. In essence, talking to some people that put this together, this was a lot of some of this, some of that, throw it together, who knows what. Some people said, you're selling out the county to one person because it's inevitable that the county executive with all, is going to have all the power. Some people said, it's not enough power. I don't know. I'll let history decide that. It's been fifty years. But I, I do think this is one area where you can take that position that this is council's decision to make under the Residual Powers Act. It has been fifty years.
So if I could weigh in on this, thank you.
That's it for me.
Thank you. My concern with this is several points. Number one is that you're only addressing the annual conference. There are three conferences. The annual is just one, and there are votes, or there's the right to make decisions at all three. So if you're inferring that we're going to vote in the beginning of the year for five people to have the vote for the whole year, I'm in disagreement of that. I think that sometimes you might go to the spring, but you might, like, I went to Erie myself and nobody else went, you know? And so maybe people called in, but we, you know, if they didn't remember to call in, we got one vote. So I, I think that if we're going to do this, that, that should be amended. Well, it's all over the place, but that, because it's C cap annual conference. So the other thing is that there are people that are more active than not, and there are people that are going to go and not go. So if there's people, like myself, I'm on the board. I would like to be able to vote. I'm a board member and I am most involved at this time. Some of you may be the board member. Some of you may get active on committees. I think if you're active on a committee and you've worked on a committee all year on the resolutions that you're putting forward, then you should have some priority. And then I think we should take turns. So that's my concern because, and you, and I think priority should be given to people who are really planning to be in person unless you absolutely cannot be. I understand that there's times that you can call in to vote, to Zoom, but you should be there. And if you can't be there, then it should be given to somebody else who can be in person or wants to be in person. So given that, I understand that people are not going to want the same five people all the time. So I think that we're adult enough to be able to reflect and represent that as we vote. But to just pick five people for the whole year, I disagree. And I don't know that that was your intent. I think your intent was to be able to vote and make sure that the body discusses it and determines who should go.
Table this, and then when we have more than five show up, we'll have a vote before we send everybody out there and decide who's going to be the voting members amongst ourselves. Like Ron says, we don't like to have C C A P dictate what we want, you know? If we have, if we have a meeting and all of a sudden seven people are going, we can vote amongst ourselves who's going to be the voting member.
Right. And again, I think, and not to eliminate the county executive, because again, is he interested? Is there something that he wants to vote on, and he wants to be present to vote? Does he want to vote in November? He may not. So it's a conversation to have.
He was there, and he got us the annual coming here to, you know, the, it's not called the Sands anymore, Wind Creek.
I think Tom sold it when he talked about the wineries, but yes, we did.
I tried.
No, I, I, I think that everybody should have a turn, and I, I appreciate the spirit in which this is. And I think it's, it's a good problem to have, because again, there were like three people going, or five people saying, and then four people dropping out. So, so just being aware and conversational about it, but it's up to you. But I would propose changes. I would not vote on it as it is written. Mr. Brown, and then Mr. Gafredo.
And just continuing that thought, the resolution saying we have to notify C cap seven days before the conference, so I would, this would include that the meeting, the last meeting is council meeting prior to that seven-day window, a selection is made, and that list is then...
I'd like to make a motion to table this resolution.
Second.
I just, could I speak before?
Not, because it's tabled, sorry.
No, 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 I...
He just motioned and seconded.
I was just, not about being tabled, I wanted to explain my intent for the resolution. That's it.
Motion table, call for the vote.
I'm sorry.
That's Ken being quick, sorry.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Korpora?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Is there any other new business to discuss?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan.
So, um...
No, I'm kidding. You were, you were right on that. That's good, so.
So the county executive came up and talked about needing a liaison for the NCIDA. I would like to make a, a motion to appoint Tina Smith and Merrick to Manic to, okay, to be liaison and alternate with the NCIDA on the TIF for Dixie.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Brown?
Yeah, just a point of order, whether, I mean, this is an action item. I've, I've not heard about it before. It's not on the agenda. I'm not sure that it's appropriate that this matter be brought forth, if it wants to be considered. I'd prefer that it be done at the next meeting.
I thought there was a time constraint for that.
I'm relying on Section 601 of the Home Rule Charter. It is a motion. It is not an ordinance. It is not a resolution. You may vote on it.
Any other discussion? Mr. Gafredo.
Since this body is going to be the body that votes on this TIF, I think it'd be a good idea to make Tina the alternate to a council member. I don't know if there's a council member that would like to volunteer themselves, to put themselves in that position.
I am already, I am, I am the liaison.
Wait, 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 he has the floor.
So I, I have no problem if somebody wants to nominate anybody. I just think that since we are the ones that need to vote on this, it would be nice to have somebody from council be able to be there, to fill us in, that kind of. And then if, you know, we have full-time jobs, if you can't be there, Tina can be the alternate.
Sure.
Who's, who's, wants to be recognized? Well, you wrote the resolution, so you know.
I did? Who wrote the resolution?
You do.
I didn't, oh, okay. Anyway, no, I, I do agree with the sentiment. I, I, I understand the executive's recommendation, but if this passes, or going into it, I do think it would be helpful, whoever it would be, Tina, you mentioned someone else, but Tina could be on, and maybe a council member, if they're gonna go and make, make the meetings, because I think that would be a, a binding effect then on, in other words, you don't feel like, okay, well, did we get everything? And that can happen. So I, I don't think there's anything wrong with, with that type of an arrangement. That, that's just my thoughts on that.
Thank you, Madam President. Since I have been on this council and been the liaison to the Northampton County Industrial Development Authority, we have had one meeting, which I did report on. Unfortunately, the slew of meetings were canceled due to various health issues that folks had. But I, I plan on continuing to attend those meetings when they do have them, and reporting back to council. So if that, if that provides you any sort of comfort to know that there will be a member of county council here that will be a part of those meetings, if and when the TIF does start moving through.
Mr. Brown? Mr. Brown? Mr. Brown?
Yeah, again, I, I just have an issue with this coming forth, so I'm gonna make a motion to table the item.
Second? No second to table? Huh? Table a motion? He's making a motion to table.
You can table a motion, but you need a second.
I'll second.
Die for lack of a second if there is not one.
I'll second.
All right, so, motion is tabled. Do I have to call for the vote on tabling?
Yes.
Oh, I forgot. Call for the vote.
The vote is to table the motion. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
No.
Ms. Keegan?
No.
Mr. Kraft?
No.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
No.
Mr. Korpora?
No.
The motion to table fails by a vote of four to five.
Back to discussion on the motion.
Okay, now I have a question.
Yes, sir.
We didn't clear up the concern that Mr. Gafredo had. Now, Mr. Warren had said he's been going, he's on the meetings, and he'd be there, but I haven't heard a clarification. Would you be the second person as part of this group?
I don't believe I would be the second person. I think, I, what I believe, and maybe it wasn't actually communicated, if Tina and Merrick are there and appointed, if one of them is unable to attend for whatever reason, the other one would have the opportunity to then go. I mean, this is an adminis, from my understanding, this is strictly administrative-based stuff that we're doing here.
Well, when we vote on it, a TIF, whether we do or not, it's not administrative anymore.
Absolutely, with regard to the TIF, but I'm saying the appointment of two individuals. So it, I mean, if you want it to be me, I don't...
No, I, I, look, I, I, I'm fine with you being on it. I, I just think, I mean, Ms. Merrick could be the alternate, if you couldn't make it or something like that. I just think, as an official act, this is a big deal, and now and then we get these big deals. I think it would be beneficial to have Ms. Smith and a member of council. Now, I'd say that had a finance, but, or economic development, but in this case, I don't know, you're the representative.
I'm going to be there, at the end of the day.
Because there might be a meeting, a sub-meeting regarding this, that you wouldn't ordinarily be at. I don't know that. I don't know enough about what's gonna happen with this. So I, I, I'd wish you would be at every meeting that concerns this issue.
I know that I'm gonna be on top of this, as somebody who...
Why don't we officially put you on top of it?
So, is there any other discussion?
That's fine by me. That is fine by me.
So we're not amending the, we're not amending it to put you and Tina? We're amending it? All right, so are Tina and then Merrick as her alternate?
I'm amending it.
Seconding?
Well, you don't know my amendment.
Go ahead.
I'm amending it to say that Mr. Warren is the, is the second person, and Mr. Merrick is the, is the alternate. Tina, Tina, Mr. Warren, and, and then an alternate. Now, I know it needs a second, we'll see.
I'll second.
Well, no, he, yes, he would be...
He needs two people, and then he's suggesting that Merrick would be the alternate if either the first two could not make it. I don't know if that's necessary, but it's the amendment.
I don't know. I'm, my, 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 my amendment is Tina and Mr. Warren.
It was seconded.
Is there any discussion on the amendment? Call for the vote.
This would...
On the amendment.
This is on the amendment to appoint Jeff Warren and Tina Smith. Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Korpora?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
No.
The motion to amend passes by a vote of eight to one.
Back to the amendment, amended motion. Is there any further discussion? My only concern about this is, this was brought up tonight at the meeting. I don't understand why it could not be brought to Ms. Shafnisky's attention 24 hours ago. And now, all of a sudden, it's an emergent issue, and we haven't even voted on a TIF. So I, I understand Mr. Brown's concerns, and I don't know why it, it couldn't have been discussed earlier and said, "Hey, please put this on." That's my only comment. It doesn't feel emergent to me. Anything else? Call for the vote.
This is a motion...
On the amendment, right, on the amended.
On the amended motion? This is on the amended motion to appoint Jeff Warren and Tina Smith as the alternate to the NCIDA in accordance with what the executive presented earlier. Does that make a nuts?
That's the alternate. Merrick.
Let's not talk alternates. He can show up. Tina, is it Tina and Jeff?
Ms. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Korpora?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gafredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
No.
The motion to appoint Mr. Warren and Ms. Smith passes by a vote of eight to one.
Is there any other new business to discuss?
Yeah, I have, I have something real quick. Mr. Heckman, you like to say we hold the purse strings to county council all the time? And how do we spend money as a county council person? Do we spend it with an ordinance or a motion, or how do we do it?
Well, you can spend it with an ordinance or a resolution.
Okay, so or a motion to, to do something. So like, say, Mr. Giovanni and I got mad and decided to buy two new computers, because we haven't had one for the last five years, and we go out and use this P card to buy them, and don't come to council to get their approval, what would your remedy be?
I would think that would be wrong. I don't know how you got a P card to begin with, and, as, as a member of council. But, but, I mean, I, I would think that's an inappropriate use of a P card. I don't think we, as county council, have access to P cards.
Okay, well, there's no policy or act that doesn't, that, there's no, there's, in absence of a policy not saying we can't do it, does that, is that silent to it? I mean, we just can't do that, right?
Well, there's, there's those who look at it and say, "It's an enabling, unless it's written, you can only do it if it's written." Then there's some who say, "If it's not written, that means you can do it."
Okay.
I, I'm not, I'm not a legal scholar, like we have a lot of them in this room.
But you, you, you like to hold the purse strings. I mean, that's...
Well, that's what our job is.
Right. Okay, so, um...
I mean, otherwise, you could go home for the rest of the year and then just come in for the budget.
All right, it's come to my attention that a council member spent over $3,000 on a trip. Do you know anything about a trip from one of our council members?
I haven't had a chance to even go to the shore this year.
You haven't?
Well, I, I've got stuff going on, but, no, go ahead, I don't know.
Okay.
Okay, I mean, no, I'm not aware of $3,000.
Apparently, does anybody else know of a trip that we went on? Somebody went on to somewhere? Did we vote on a trip for anybody to spend over $3,000 to fly out and go somewhere? Crickets. Did we? Well, we had a council member go to Tampa, Florida for a national annual conference for NACO.
Okay.
And it cost the taxpayers over $3,100. And I didn't hear any report, what was learned, what was gleaned from it. I don't believe this council, in all the years you've been here, 50 years now, have we sent somebody to a national event?
Actually, early on, we did.
Early on?
There was a gentleman who was on council who, who went to China.
China?
And he, a, a councilman who sat here, I was just saying, the councilman who's, who brought it to everybody's attention was Mr. Hem Street, one of my heroes. And he, he, he said, it was done under the auspices of economic development, and he, and he wanted to know why they went, I mean, were they gonna bring a cheap shirt factory to Northampton County, or, or what? But I, I understand what you're saying. I don't, I, I'm not an expert on what, how that should go. I know we go to conventions and conferences.
Yeah, we do.
And, and we, that comes out of our council contingency. For going to conferences and...
If I may, we do have in our budget each year, money set aside for a number of members if they choose to attend either C cap or NACO.
Yeah, but aside from China, we don't glean much from NACO, the national conference. And we have not had a report about what we gleaned from this meeting, this national conference, that we sent one of our members to that nobody seems to know about. My question is, why doesn't anybody know, or why didn't we vote to send somebody out of state and spend $3,100 of the taxpayers' money for a plane, rental cars, valet parking, meals, hotel rooms, everything else?
Valet parking?
Oh, yeah.
I, look, I, I think council...
I know you like valet parking. I do, too. I use it all the time.
I, uh, well, and you got it, you got it. But the thing is, I, I'm not adverse to a policy where there's over a certain amount. I know the monies, we put money in contingency, not just for things, we want to give something to the animal shelter, this, that, but it is also factored in with trips and conferences. Now, NACO, I, like I said, I knew of one council member who went to NACO, but I don't, I'm not aware of, of many NACO requests. So I, I guess in lieu of, without a policy, I guess you could call it a conference or a convention. If you feel there should be a limit on how much is spent without a vote, then we should put a policy in place.
My point is, if you're going to send somebody out of state for a conference, and believe me, when I worked for that administration, I tried to go out of state for a conference, and it was no way. I'm not paying any money to send anybody anywhere. And I feel that $3,100 of the people's money should have been voted on by this council to send somebody. If there's something for us to glean from the national organization of NACO that we haven't even heard a report from, I mean, I, I think the money should be paid back.
I, I would like to hear more about this, as you're bringing something up there.
Well, you want to expand on it, Ms. Hefner?
Sure. I wanted to attend NACO this year. I asked the county clerk before I went if it was in the budget, if I went and I was able to go, if there would be enough before I went and agreed to go, if every council member could attend every C cap council conference for the rest of the year, and I was told that it was an allowable expense and that I could do so.[1640.94]
before I went and agreed to go, if every council member could attend every CCAP council conference for the rest of the year, and I was told that it was an allowable expense and that I could do so.
So this was the temporary person?
I also, I also, I started discussing it with Ms. Zembo before she left. I also did discuss that I went, but I didn't give a full report, so if you'd like me to, I will. But my whole point in going, and I believe I stated this at council, is that we are going to be hosting as a state next year. And so before we host, I wanted to be made aware of what it was and how it operated. I am also aware, as a council member, that there are other council members who have attended other conferences in the past, and I believe the protocol was just to ask. We have never voted on everybody who's going to CCAP, how much their expenses were. I do realize it was an extra expense. The valet parking wasn't valet, it was the hotel parking, and that's the parking that was available by the hotel. So it wasn't like I could go around the street and park. But if you really want me to pay this back, and you want to vote on that, I'll be happy to do so. I just thought that I asked, it was in the budget. And I know when other people went to certain conferences that they had interest in, and nothing was ever done with it in council, it was allowed, so...
Yeah, all those conferences were in-state, and we drove to them. This is an out-of-state national conference for something I don't even think, you know, does anything for us.
Which is coming to Pennsylvania next year.
Mm-hmm. So nobody knew about this. That's my point.
No, they, people knew about it. He knew about it, and the staff knew about it.
Who's he?
And I asked. Mr. Spadoni.
Mr. Spadoni, is he a voting member of council?
No, but he's our lawyer. Is it okay for me to spend this money or not? It's in the budget.
It is not in the budget to go out of state for a NACO conference.
It's in the budget. There's nothing in the budget that said you can't go out of state. If you want to make a motion for me to pay the money back, do so.
All right. I'll make a motion that you pay the money back to the people of the county.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Dies for lack of a second.
All right.
I think you made your point.
Mr. Kraft, I get this, I mean, I'm all for if we want to put a policy in place in a number amount. But like I said, actually, one of our people, the fellow I'm talking about, ended up being president of NACO, and he was going to meetings. Now, I understand, Ms., you're a board member now, right?
Yes.
Okay. I get the sense that you did this, like, this to slam her.
No, I got to say, I did it because it's $3,100 taxpayer money.
Well, you got all the...
We've never sent anybody out of state for a NACO conference, besides your Chinese person 40 years ago.
I also do, may I...
I can't say for sure that's true.
Sir, may I just for a minute, I also believe that I stated on this dais that I went, and that my point was that I was putting money in the budget next year because it's in Philadelphia to make sure that he people here could go.
Yeah, I don't remember hearing that at all. That's why I'm asking.
Well, you might not have been here that night, but I did state it.
I've been here every night.
Well, we'll see.
I'd like to just say that I think we could discuss, or possibly if somebody wants to put together a resolution to, in the future, to say at certain levels, I don't think we need to have a vote every time somebody wants to go out to Harrisburg, or...
No, I'm not talking about in-state, out-of-state.
I know what you're saying. That's my point. If we put a dollar amount on it, or out-of-state, however...
I mean, if the next one's Hawaii, you know, let's go, Ron. It's in the budget.
I'd just like to say, I'm not gonna...
I'll control your air supply.
I didn't second the motion, but I do think that in those instances, that that needs to be something that we don't talk to the county clerk and the solicitor about. We talk to the other members of council, because that is, that is an exorbitant amount of money for, you know...
And that's my only point.
And I don't think we need to bring it in front. I think that's a conversation we could have behind closed doors at the same time.
Well, that's why we do things in the dark, in the shadows.
Well, that's the intent, Mr. Gafredo. Thank you.
That's also the reason why I agree with Mr. Kraft, because transparency goes both ways. So without having to embarrass people, I think that customarily, we should absolutely be talking about that amongst ourselves before we go doing things like that.
Any other new business, or any other admonishments or public humiliations?
I have a question on your new business. I know tonight, I can go home and watch the Ravens on TV, but tomorrow, it says that the Eagles' first game, and I think it's down in Brazil, it's only being streamed. Does anyone know if I can catch that on TV? Or if I have to go far?
If you don't mind, Madam President?
It's new business.
Sure.
If you are in the Philadelphia market, it will be broadcast on, I believe, NBC-10, I believe.
Thank you very much. I appreciate, I didn't know how I could get that answer.
I do not believe we will need to...
Tried calling Service Electric, and they wanted to up my plan, but, okay, so, I'm sorry, Madam President.
Any committee reports?
At an Economic Development Committee meeting this afternoon, the fruits of the labor of that meeting were voted on here tonight.
Any other committee reports?
We had the Human Services Committee. We heard, we voted on the resolution for Gracel. We got an update on Health Choices Program, and an update on Gracel. Jen brought the council report that Mr. Heckman had asked her to do. Very informative.
Anything else? Any other liaison reports?
May I mention something about committees? I know I sent a memo out to everybody on council. I sent a memo to everybody on council, temporarily stepping back from chairing committees. And I just wanted to say, that was all I was doing. I still had, like, today, I was on the committee. I just thought, there's things going on, and I don't want to inconvenience county council, putting together agendas, and I don't, I'm not here, or whatever. But by no means does it mean I'm resigning from anything else. The birds aren't circling my house. I would ask everybody to put their shovels aside. I intend to be here, and maybe even chairing committees in the future. So I just wanted to make that clear, because I had a few phone calls, and I think they were looking for funeral notices. And I said there are none, and I don't know how that started, but I just wanted to clarify that. But thank you. Thank you.
Any other liaison reports? Clerk's report?
None.
Solicitor's report?
Nothing.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?